We can all rise to the plate. My allegiance, our United States of America, and to the public, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, we're going to get to the question.
That is right. Praise your fathers, and thank you for allowing us to see another day, and thank you for everyone that's present here. Father, we pray that everything that's said is said with peace and seeing in order, but we know that you are not a god of confusion in this court. But we love you and we give you all the praise and honor, in Jesus' name, amen.
You can have break, show that all members of council present. See, then we have totally four public hearings on different ordinances. I'm going to repeat off of the top of the agenda really quick, it's also up there if you want to see it yourself. But just to remind everybody, public hearing, it's understood to be a forum for people interested in the subject matter to present information to the town council for its consideration, this is a debate's mission. It's not a forum for debate or argument between members of council and/or opponents or proponents. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, town council, they authorize one extension of pre-additional. Addition of verbal presentation, written materials may be submitted to the town council for its consideration throughout the two days following today. If we pull the.
I am, and I was waiting for them to finish.
How's that? How's that? And did we put the other microphone up?
It's up there, yeah.
Grab the.
Grab it.
Now, each speaker that's called forward, I will ask you to give us your name, your address, and the matter that you're speaking on. You do need to understand, I know we have a lot of folks here this evening, that the matters that can be presented to council are limited to what's on the agenda. If what you want to speak about is not a matter that was on our agenda this evening, we're not going to allow you to speak.
Keith Starnes.
All right, Keith, can you come forward please?
Keith Starnes.
Yes, sir, we have a microphone over here so everybody can hear.
There's a button on there, if you push the button, you can start talking.
I got to talk against saying with God, read two or three times, and there's some issues on this thing that I am very concerned about. First of all, it says there's seven hundred forty-two people in this town, I'll quit. The questionnaire that was sent out, only a hundred forty-six. I've talked to many, many people. In fact, people here, they never heard of this thing. To just, just try to put a handle on it, I call my cousin, my neighbor, the national employee, last week, they didn't know what I'm talking about. But if they don't know what I'm talking about, and you imagine what the people up on White Oak Ridge, the people in Monterey, all these landowners, none of them knew nothing about. So, secondly, the questions you asked and asked in these things, you get your answer by how you ask the question. And there's a lot of redundancy in this thing, you probably could sum it up in two phases. One thing that stands out, all the people want a rural section, but if you go through here and you read it fine print, it ain't going to be that way down the road. You're going to have parts, you're going to have bike trail, how many people ride bikes, I know your wife rides one, okay, maybe a couple of other people. If I lived on Albinoff Road back there, and you were going to put a bike trail, and a walking trail down by our house, and I'm living in secluded, I'm looking at everything, and they walk, somebody has a problem. The next thing, there's some things in here about, you know, the age and everything, seventy-eight percent won't rate development, not new development. Also, what really bothers me, what I got to say is the truth, it can be proof. My son's been harassed down here, first of all, there's no heavy industrial word in any of this thing, he has industrial in one place. He has been harassed unmercifully because people turned him into a camp. I had a fellow come to me about three months ago and said, hey, what do you sell the brickyard for? I said, I didn't sell the brickyard. He said, well, that's not what I understand, now, he's from North Carolina, he's not from right here. He said, well, a fellow came to me and said that we're going to close you down. And then, that the guy going to buy, and then that the guy going to develop. And I said, well, do you, he said, they hate y'all. I said, do you know who they are? And he said, do you know so-and-so, I don't call the name, I forgot, I need a little while before you say it. Things like that. And on this campus, there's a lot of these people in this room, or been on this campus. The next thing was that a guy came to me last week, and he said, I would meet him with one of your people that's on this, this, this book here that's on the campus. And said, they told me that y'all were going to close down the Methodist church, and then you were going to take it over as the town council. Now, wait a minute, that person's on this campus? And they didn't just come out with it, somebody had to talk about it. I tell you, anybody close down a church enough for fuck down either, and I tell you to your face, face with a church like this. Secondly, you can't take the church over because it's governed by the message, and the, and the members have got to agree. It's kind of stuff like that in this town, and y'all are listening to some of them, and I'm not going to be particular, maybe you can figure it out. But it bothers me to know in. Secondly, we were promised, we went in this town, and you know I was one of the life who went in, and Mr. Vaughn over there promised me would be, huh, we'll do agriculture, we'll do this, we'll do that. You put a bike trail down by my lane, you going to tell me I can't shoot? And none of this stuff, in my opinion, Dickie, had come to, and I'm not the only one, I've heard a lot of people say, he lied to us, I'm just telling it like it is, and what's happening? And I don't think the people in this community really know what's going on, but we're going to add to it.
William. I can't, you can't read the last name, William? So.
Williamson?
Yeah.
I am speaking to the city council tonight on the comprehensive plan. They, I agree with Sonny on everything of it, and the large landowners have not been involved of this comprehensive plan. I have heard that they took a survey on it and all that, some of it did not even, the survey was taken from a certain neighborhood that was not even annexed into the town of Vanwa. I called the gentleman, excuse me, I called the man yesterday, wanting to look at the comprehensive plan. And he said, oh, well, you've been talking to Keith Stone and Bobby Goode, if I had not talked to them, I would not have known anything about this comprehensive plan. And he said, I'm quoting him, these are not my words, he said, all you damned assholes, large landowners, are wanting to sell your land and move to the beach, or move to the mountain. I said, well, this damned asshole, he knows more about this damned asshole business than he knows of his own business. And then, then we're getting back to when the town organized. I was under the impression, they, they was going to adapt the planning and zoning of Lakeview County. I had a contract on my property. I come to find out Vanwa had their own plan, so. My land was zoned for one unit per acre. I never even was notified by anyone that there was any rezoning on my property. But yet, there is property that joins my property, that is between my property and the little community of Vanwa that is zoned in the county for two and a half units per acre. There is property that's on the north side, then there's property on the west side of it that is also zoned, two and a half units per acre. Then I have the state farm on the east side. And south, just south of me, it's corner five, five. But I ask you, as the city council, to really think long and hard and study this comprehensive plan. And another thing, me trying to sell my farm and them to develop within being one unit per acre. My farm has dropped forty-four percent in value. And you know, that sucks, I'm sorry.
Richard Ashley.
My name is Richard Ashley, State twenty-four West Street, about road. I've lived in this community for over sixty years, and I have never seen so much disharmony in all my life. It's originating in this room right here. The very idea that you're going to develop an HOA-style comprehensive plan for this multi-thousand-acre community is ludicrous. And I would really like to know what the reason, I know what part of the reason is, but one of the things that we request that you do is consider sending aside the vote for the comprehensive plan and for the restriction of land sales. I have land that I've been working surveyors for six months, that I plan, it's seventy-eight years old, I'm going to retire, I'm not going to work forever. And you folks down here get together, put your heads together, and get a bunch of good ideas, and it affects me financially, it affects a bunch of people out here financially. And that sure is dead wrong, you should never have taken this job if you weren't concerned about the welfare of all the people in this community. Further, in the future, you need to do a much better job of communicating with these people. I can go out to probably every household, every other household, and they wouldn't have any idea what we're talking about. Now, on the main street, they probably would, but out in the hinterland, they don't know what you're doing up here, amen. They trust you, that was a misplaced trust. I think the best thing you need to do is resign to your positions and go back to your house, that's all I got to say.
Before I call the next speaker, I will ask, if you try to keep it professional, so next up, please.
Bobby Otter.
Hey, good evening, I don't want to go past, after all these people are not, I'm here to talk about comprehensive plans. This plan was put together without any input from a small, large landlord, which totals seventy percent of the land in town. Okay, number two, you got in this comprehensive plan, you want to plant the tree camp, what does this mean? After talking to several people in other counties around this meeting, you cannot put, we cannot put large landowners out of timber without your permission. You homeowners cannot cut your trees in your yard without permission, you cannot plant a tree without that permission. This is totally wrong. You also, and go on your laws, will be able to plant any trees on your land without permission, whether you own a quarter acre lot or six hundred acres. Third, in this specific thing, is walking in bike trails. You say you want these trails to go along twelve-mile creeks, which land is not even in the town. Then you want to go on the copper river, which is our property. Nobody's ever asked us about putting a trail on my property, it's our family property. Do you not realize that any one time, we have over two million dollars worth of equipment in these bodies, working? And a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars worth of property, if the crop prices were good, and you want us to open our property for every tom, dig, and harry to walk? It don't happen, that puts us landowners with a sleeve to my family and a great, great liability. And they just can't sleep. Third, I'd like to know, in the world, y'all considered this plan after the survey was returned, which included non-residence of the town? In your book, you said over fifty percent of the return balance was from Millstone Creek, not even in that, like, what are we doing, doing that? Saying, I know you're looking, but it's simply stated. The next biggest group have not lived one five years, where does that leave all this whole town? You're saying, I've been receiving, where does that leave? You had no input from me, didn't know anything about it, but that's what was going on. This, this is the biggest problem I have with this plan. Letter should have been sent out to all the big landowners, and they should have been sent out to every, that make every person in the, every household, so they would know what was going on there. You can't rely on social media, that's not going to work, in a community like ours, we spread outside, that doesn't work, a lot of stuff, look, Facebook. But something this important should have been an extra letter that every homeowner in this town deserved. We've known what's going on, and I ask for you to table this, and then call us together. And let the landowners, let them have an input into what the future is seeing. Not just a person that owns a four or eight, well, eight, have an all of us, what we going to do, and how we going to do. Friends, that ain't going to work, you want a bike, you looking at one, if you go through something like this. I've talked to neighboring counties, and the towns in those counties, they started out this way, or soon. And now, it's just like I said, they can't put a tree without permission of the town. They can't plant a tree without permission, someone goes so far as they can't even plant a shrubbery without permission. These are things we need to sit down and approve and discuss before anything like this is ever passed. Thank you for your time.
Scott. Edgar.
Good evening. I guess, first of all, to me, the comprehensive plan is just a starting document discussion. I had no legislature before, so at this point, there's no, things have been inactive, so you can or can't be discussed. But the good news is, it started discussion. I just had a couple of questions on, I didn't realize it would be, anyway. I guess sanitary sewers, my worst question. There's, is there, anybody know anything on sanitary sewer?
We don't have it.
No, we don't, I mean, is that going to be kind of continued, I mean, you have large lots, sanitary sewer encourages much venture development. So if sanitary sewer is going to be in, then there'll be pressure, financial pressure to increase the business. So just thirty-six years of doing this, trust me, that will happen. Although, you know, other thing is, the river, the waters are recent, the, they're putting in a new kayak in place downstream from us, there's no, there's really no end. Sun City had a take-in, take-out point, and all their stuff is next to the river, it's really like a big shed, but it's flooded, so you can do things in the floodbank, just can't put any insurable elements in it. So if you do something in the floodbank, you can't add fill to the floodbank, you take fill out, you can't add fill to the floodbank. So anyway, don't have anything other than, I read it, to me, it was a good, it was a good first push, it started the discussion, it made for it to start a war, but anyway. I'll have to do that.
Thank you. Jane Massey. Jane?
Jane here.
You can speak about whatever, it's got to be on one of the ordinances.
One of the four.
Maybe go ahead.
Which, which matter are you speaking on? Oh.
That's your, that's your council.
Yeah, yeah, that's your council, maybe, we can hold that over until we're done with the public hearing part, you know what, I'm sorry.
What? Sorry, guys.
Pastor Coe.
Pastor Rick Coe, Trinity Baptist Church, fifteen nineteen Steel Hill Road, we all. Thanks for living here, fifteen nineteen Steel Hill Road, I'm a graduate of Indian Land, nineteen eighty-four, born and raised here, fifty-five years. Love my community, came home to start this church in a lone room, twelve people, God has truly blessed us. Unlike everybody else that's in this room tonight, we're not in the money business. Yes.
Which matter are you speaking from?
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive?
Moratorium is to stop everything.
Moratorium on?
Do you have a moratorium on the agenda tonight to stop any sales, same thing Mr. Rastus spoke on?
You do know that doesn't impact anything that's underway currently, that there's an application underway currently.
Yes, we're very worried.
Okay, all right, go ahead, sorry.
On the comprehensive plan, I've been briefed on this by council, I took a look at it myself. I asked a question the other day, we're in the process right now of building a nursery, we have seventy children under the age of one-year-old, seventy. Unlike many churches in this nation, Trinity has been blessed, we're growing, and we have grown since the day we've been in our living room, we started out in four, four years, only because we couldn't resell here due to the price of property of a brand-new church coming in. But we're also in a land contract deal with Mr. Ashley to purchase more land just for future stuff, down the highway stuff, whatever, they're not growing land anymore, there is, is running out. But we have a good problem, and the problem really resides in our children. We're in the people's business, I'm not sure if you're aware, your head's in the sand, maybe you don't know, this gentleman right here can tell you a lot about the drug situation that is in Vanwa. I'm going to quote Sheriff Barry Fale, pastor, your church is taking more drugs out of Vanwa than the sheriff's department. We have a complete drug rehabilitation program to put people back on the street. I asked planning and zoning in their comprehensive plan that's coming up just the other day. Where do you stand with churches in that comprehensive plan, are you open to churches coming in? Now, the gentleman just said, very eloquently, that this is an opening statement. Just last week, I'm in a planning meeting in Lancaster to rezone my cemetery, we have to be in the same zoning for a cemetery, right? The recommendation from planning was to deny it because of what Vanwa may do, this came straight out, and now I've got the minutes to the meeting. For what Vanwa may do in the future, this word keeps coming up, it's complicated, it's not complicated. Either the town of Vanwa and their comprehensive plan will be for White Oak Ridge design, Steel Hill A and B design, Macedonian Baptist, Trinity Presbyterian, Vanwa Presbyterian, Vanwa Methodist, and Trinity Baptist Church. Either this town will be for the church or against the church, and my question is, in your comprehensive plan, can churches be built in this town? There may be another young man who grew up and has a burden to help his town, just like I did. Start a church in his living room, contact any of these major landowners and say, we'd like to purchase ten acres of land to start a church in Vanwa, are you going to be open to that? Is that in your plan, is it in writing, and I need to see that. Number two, in their comprehensive plan, do any of the churches that I've named that already exist, are they allowed to grow? Are they allowed to put a gymnasium in for their children, are they allowed to go fellowship hall? And in my case, I was denied the other day and postponed until the end of July to bury my dead in a cemetery. It is appalling, it is unconstitutional, and it's completely against any ethics that any church should not be allowed to bury their dead because of what we may do in the future in the comprehensive plan. That's my question, my question is, in the comprehensive plan, are churches there, if they are, I want to see it in writing, what zoning are you going to put under them? What restrictions are you going to put under them? How does that play out in the life of the church, and that's for every church, I'm not speaking for Trinity, I'm speaking for every church in this town. Are they allowed to expand, and are they allowed to come in and start something new? I'm surrounded by my staff tonight, I have over several hundred people tonight watching on videocast at my church, right now live, because they didn't want to stand in the rain out of one town. But they're broadcasting, that church wants to know five hundred members. Where does the town of Vanwa stand with the church as a whole, every church, and not just our church, so thank you for your time.
Kyle Starnes.
Push the button on.
Yeah.
Well, as y'all know, my name's Kyle Starnes, most of you, I own a lot of, most all the property and business downtown Vanwa.
Just working. What was I going to go?
What was I saying? Basically, it's, to sum up what everybody has stood up here and talked to y'all about, obviously, you see some are angry, a lot of us have been here a very long time. But my belief in speaking with everyone out here in this audience, and being, have lived here, put everything I own, my retirement, my dad's farm in this town, we were under the impression we were going under what we call a paperless town, a paper town, which means, basically, we are a town, the reason we became a town is to protect us from other towns, if that makes any sense. A lot of things, you know, this comprehensive plan, it, it does alter everything that we stand for, what we have, it destroys a lot of the financial. Even if people want to go to the beach or retire, go to the mounds, that's their choice, and that's their choice, what they want to do with the land. But the thing about it is, we didn't sign up for that, we signed up to be able to become a town and stay a town without drastic changes, just like we've seen here. The other thing is the moratorium, I stand for you tonight because we, we bought the old gun shop, for two years, we've been spending money on that, a lot of money. For two years, we've been spending money on that, a lot of money. As of tonight, it's seven thirty-two, but we put a permit in today just to be able to proceed with some of the things, not knowing what we can and can't proceed with, which could delay us up to a year if some of the stuff was passed. What will be passed tonight, I don't know, and I didn't know it had been passed prior. But what they're telling y'all is, we're not being notified. Uh, putting stuff in the paper on the back page, it's two inches wide, we can't read without glasses, is not really notifying people that have millions of dollars in this town, and they literally have land and buildings that have been in families for a hundred years. To me, that means a little more than people have moved in in five years and bought an acre of land and built a new house. Uh, I just think that's a little more, it's called respect. We have people move in every day in this town, realtors flood our place, sell our land, divide it up. Those same people turn around and, uh, destroy the town and their neighbors, and never shake their hand and introduce themselves. So on this moratorium, I would like for it to be tabled, we don't know anything about it. I'm unfortunately in the only business owner in the town office. So there's no one else that could really speak on my behalf, but I can speak on behalf of the landowners. This comprehensive plan has a lot of unknowns and what-ifs, uh, the tree canopy that Bob Yoder spoke about. Uh, we spoke to attorneys, that can be, uh, labricated in a lot of ways, a lot of ways down the road. And there's just too many loose ends. Uh, we're basically like Mayberry, we don't need New York standards in this town right now. We will grow into that, but I think it's just too much for some of these people and the lack of communication. Thank you.
That was it?
That was it? At this point, I'm gonna close. Close the public hearing, we're all three, and, actually, no, let's not do that. Uh, we'll close the public comments on it, and we're gonna open it up for our planning commissioners. Uh, if they have any comments about the comprehensive plan this evening. Just, just for... My own point on here, I do, did hear a lot of things this evening in public comments that certainly qualifies as, uh, probably some misinformation that's been spread around, and, uh, it's hard for us to, there's some of that up there, buddy. And before I do that, I'm also gonna remind everybody that we have a website. We've had it for a couple of years now. Uh, we have to publish things in the newspaper. Every meeting is posted physically by myself. Chrissy has been for four years at both the post office and the community center. I try to appraise everybody what's going on, but... If you don't pay attention, it's not, not that I can do.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, can y'all hear me okay? I've been back tonight, but I'm still wearing my mask, so, uh, but, uh, but, uh...
Who are you?
My name is Tara Drain, I work with Catawba Regional Council Government. And, um, it's been our privilege to work with the town over the past year. And, uh, the planning commissioners who are sitting behind me have worked very hard over the past, uh, year to develop town's first comprehensive plan. Uh, we have a summary handout and questions and answers that were on the table.
Tara, they can't hear you in the back.
Just gotta hold my phone.
Does that work, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, but, the, the summary document that you have, uh, really goes into detail about the contents of the plan. Uh, the plan is developed according to the, um, uh, the South Carolina Planning Act of nineteen ninety-four. And so there are certain state requirements that go into what has to be in the comprehensive plan. And so, um, but one of the things I wanted to, to read to you is the vision statement. And I appreciate, um, Scott making the comment about it being a starting point. Uh, the comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document at all. It's actually a vision or a plan for the future, and it's a guiding document. And so, the vision statement that was developed for the plan says, this offensive rural lifestyle provides access to greenways, river trails, and parks that connect modern amenities, services, and cultural facilities. Sewers of the natural environment, communities committed to the development with sensitive sites and architecture in design that preserves and enhances the native landscape, farmland, and forest land. And I will say that the, uh, the community survey that was done last year was, um, uh, I realize that some of you were not, did not get, were not, weren't able to participate in that process. But the, the community survey was sent out to, for the town, and also for people outside the town, because the planning area includes people that live outside this town. Um, the, the comments that we heard from the community, uh, were that it was important to maintain the rural lifestyle, that they, uh, the natural landscape was important, maintaining a small-town feel, and regional context. And so those were the core values, and the vision statement and the core values are what uh, the foundation for the elements that are in the comprehensive plan. And I won't go into detail about the individual elements, but I did want to mention that, um, under the ba, on the backside, there are frequently asked questions, and there's a couple of these that are very important. Uh, the second item states, is the comprehensive plan a legal document? The answer is yes, a legal document, and it's the foundation for land development and zoning regulation. Uh, the plan has no regulatory impact, but is a guide for future actions of the community. It's a roadmap for the town to prepare land development and other ordinances necessary to implement the comprehensive plan. Will the zoning change at my house or farm, or place of worship, as you say? The comprehensive plan does not change any zoning, it is a guide or vision for the future. Uh, one of the things that's important is that for uses that are allowed today, such as cemetery in a rural neighborhood zone, it will be allowed, it, uh, that, that will not change. So, any use that's allowed today will be allowed in the future because the comprehensive plan is a vision of where the community wants to go, but it's not a regulatory document. So, I'm not sure if, um, that maybe addresses some of the, uh, comments that folks have said, um... Oh, for the tree canopy. Thank you, and if I forget anything else, y'all, time to go. Okay, so for the tree canopy. The reason that you see that noted and described is that part of what makes Vanwhack such a beautiful place to live is your, is your forested land. And so the tree canopy is what makes it a beautiful place to be. You can imagine, if the community developed in a suburban style, where, and you had, the tree canopies were lost, and you didn't have that, you wouldn't have the beauty that brought you all here, or who, or you grew up here, why you chose to live here. And so, the, the comments about an ordinance are, they're about the intent of not letting people cut down trees. It's the total opposite. Uh, if you have land and you want to forest your land and for the trees, that will be allowed, that would, that would continue. There's no intent to stop people from removing a tree, or, or, um, people being able to do, uh, forest, tree, tree, tree farming, um, that's not the intent. The intent is to maintain the beauty of the area, and so when you have development occur, that they try to preserve the mature trees that you have in the community. So it's really the opposite of what some of the comments were, um, it was telling... Um... Uh, one of the things I wanted to comment on, a lot of the comments about the bike trails, and...
I was, I was gonna chip in on that, you didn't.
Okay, you feel free to add, but I just wanted to say that the intent of that is to have, um, have trails developed in a way that allows the people who live here to be able to enjoy and get out, and if they want to buy for walk with their family, or with, um, by themselves, that they have the opportunity to get out and travel by foot or bike. And, uh, the comment about the Catawba River, um, there, you have to think of it again as more of a, of a big vision and not a, not a detail, it's not the, it's not the how. Um, but for example, with the river, you can, you can think of it as a blue wave, where people are not on private property, but they may be kayaking the river to get from, uh, maybe the Catawba reservation, uh, down to see the, to land for, now, or they may wanna get out at Vanwhack and go shop or buy, you know, you know. So, it's not necessarily a, um, again, when the, when the, um, when the trail system is developed further, uh, as far as exactly the details of how things can be done, uh, that, again, it's just a vision, it's not, it's not the intent to... It's the top, the intent is to enjoy the rural lifestyle, not to disrupt it. Mayor, you might wanna add something to it.
Uh, no, no, I had a whole, whole list of more points I was gonna discuss with council tomorrow, just came up in the public comments. You actually hit on a few of those, uh, a few of those, can everybody hear me okay, another mic comes. So, uh, let's cut now, no, no, you're good, you're good. Um, but yeah, um, the comment on the trails, I'm gonna ask the comments of council on this. Uh, I think it's interesting that, um, that a resource like that would, would kind of receive the negative, uh, response that we did towards the community. Um, and, and it also highlights a point, I think you said his name's Scott, uh, uh, from up here, up here in Old Hickory. They, they point out, this is, this is a starting point, it's not an ordinance that says what you can and can't do with your lands. If, if something like the trails would require legally, um, uh, the town to approach the landowner, and get them to either contract with the town for an easement, or to sell, um, a strip of land or some such thing to allow us to do something like that, and a landowner's perfectly free to say, no, they don't want to. So, uh, it's, uh, you know, we were, at least my vision of this whole thing was that hopefully we would, uh, at some point have some landowners who would see the, the wisdom in doing something like that, and what it would do for our property values around here. But, uh, it sounds like, uh, maybe that's not, not something that folks are interested in. Uh, anybody on council have any comments about, uh, the trails, or the, uh... What else do we have on here that I don't want to talk about? Any comments on the trail, move on. Yeah, sure, well, can you grab a mic, son?
I think there's been a little bit of misinformation about trails, and that is, as Sean pointed out, there's no way that a municipality, a town, or commission, or a town council can go onto public land. Um, there is ways in the domain, but I have not heard since I've been on this commission or set in all the town councils, any mention of imminent domain, especially for a trail. Trails are fun, trails are for bicycling, for hiking, for getting out into nature and enjoying, enjoying. There's no way that this town is going to make any particular land element, but the trail is fun. Um, it would be a volunteer situation. I, I noticed that there was, Obanaski Road was mentioned, because Obanaski and, um, Southwick and Millstone are all part of the trail system. Those are county roads. And the people that live on those roads have cars going up and down them, uh, on occasion, but it's very, very likely traveled. It's an absolutely ideal place to put trails, because we have that, we're blessed with that in the city, has the gravel road. There's, there's not many towns or many areas that have gravel roads that are maintained by us in the county. So, we, we have that, we're blessed with that. So that's where the majority of the trails are. The other notations in the, in the comprehensive plan about where the trails could be, if they, if they are planted onto private land, the private landowner has to agree. So, I do, I, I heard a lot of misinformation tonight, and I, I really, and, and that's nobody's fault, we're not, we're not complaining about that. It's just that we really do need to get our facts straight before we start getting upset about, about some of this. And there's, there's some other things too, and I do agree that we need to, we need to talk about these. So, any, any other question, I mean, we've had our public comments, we did not leave out the questions, but Sean?
I'm saying, Gus, not being here all evening, I'd rather not open the back of public comments.
No, 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 I didn't ask for that, I'm saying that we've already had our public comments, so we can't talk. But there will be times when we, there's the comprehensive plan, the next step, everybody was talking about regulations are gonna be put on my land that are not there now, that's misinformation, there's no regulation that's gonna be put on my land. That's when we get together in the community and discuss what's called a unified development ordinance. So the ordinance is that then become legal, this is a guide, it's not legal.
Yeah, I'd like to put an estimation point behind that. Land regulation is the zoning code, that's not what we're doing, it's the comp plan. This is, this is a vision for what's gonna look like the next ten years, ten years from now. Um, and there will have to be other public hearings and discussion, we go around and doing unified development ordinance, which we're going to have to do. The county is redoing their unified development ordinance, they've made it very clear it's not gonna work for me this town, so we have to do it. And there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input. All right. Any other comments from council? So, was there any? This is a joint hearing. I said I didn't mention... Right. Well, the only other comment, I do wanna touch on one of Keith Starnes' comments. I mean, Kyle Starnes' comments, he mentioned the, uh, the moratorium is one of the matters, but not the comp plan, the moratorium. We actually have four hearings lined up this evening. We haven't got, but, uh, but the, uh, the comp plan, the zoning moratorium, and there's a, there's a ordinance freezing our current zoning with the county's, version of the county zoning as of the beginning of that. All three of those were handed in to allow us time to develop and create that unified development ordinance. We have to pump the brakes and give ourselves room to allow that to happen, but we don't. We're gonna wind up being in a situation where there, the existing county ordinances are being applied to our new vision. And while that sounds like that may be doable or workable, it's actually gonna cause quite a mess if we allow that to happen. So, by pressing, putting a temporary pause on that gives us the room to create that unified development. Uh, and if, once that's in place, I haven't been able to go from there. But to Kyle's point, he did bring up the, uh, uh, the fact that he's, uh, taken a permit on, I believe, one of the buildings, the bottom of the hill. Uh, I do want to propose to council this evening, when we get around to to, uh, the policy part of the agenda on the moratorium ordinance, that we treat this as an ear and assuming a table at two large online meetings. Because I think we could very well, for what existing landowners are doing, I think we could pull out the, uh, conditional use keys from that moratorium. So folks who wanna do a conditional use rezoning, similar to what was done with the Methodist property, or, uh, or what Kyle's looking to do with the, uh, the corner down there potentially, they'll be able to do that, more important we'll get with. We're much more concerned about a mid-subdivision coming in, right at the time we're trying to do the U D O. Uh, but that would be a mess, so that's, that's what we're going with. That's gonna be my suggestion during the part of meetings, that, that, when the second reading will, will alter that ordinance to allow conditional use. Uh, so folks who wanna do conditional use, not full rezoning, but conditional use zoning, which is what we would be able to have. Now, speaking out of turn, I think we're gonna chat more about that, but I think that's what needs to happen. And it also allows, uh, the, the, uh, rezoning hearing that's currently for a planning commission. That, that hearing was wrapped up, but the decision on it didn't happen, it's tabled to the next official meeting. Uh, there was a little information in the public comments about that as well, I understand that. When is your next official, um, meeting where that will be on the agenda, we know yet?
It's, um... It's the end of this month.
It's the June twenty-second?
June twenty-eighth, I think, I don't have it right here.
But there will be an opportunity for public comment there as well. But there will be an opportunity for public comment there as well.
I'll speak on what the moratorium is actually about.
Sure. So what Roy was asking me to do is speak a little bit more on the moratorium ordinance. And as to what its effects. All right. So the way the language works, it says no applications for, during the moratorium, so no applications for district boundary map amendments to the UDO, and no application for major subdivision developments shall be accepted and processed for all real properties located in the town of Van Wyk for period 12 months. I'm going to back back into that for a second. We're hoping we get this done in a shorter timeframe than that. We would like to see this done in a six to nine month, 12 month, uh, six to nine month timeframe rather than the 12 month timeframe. Applications for district boundary map amendments, that affects a couple of things. That would be annexations, one. That would also be changing the zoning from what's currently in a given area to something different. So if you currently live in a agricultural zone district, and you want to go to medium density residential or something that allows multiple homes on one acre, that's what we're pressing the pause button on. You think that covered that, Roy?
Thank you.
Anybody else on council have a question about the moratorium? Also want to speak to Mr. Sims' comment about his current zoning on his property. But the records show that town council hasn't rezoned anything in the four years we've been. So the zoning that is currently in place for all the properties in the town of Van Wyk is the zoning that was there unless you've applied to have rezoned and worked with the county on that prior to us having our own plan. So it hasn't changed. For the discussion from town council or the planning commission? Anything I need to highlight or should? Okay, so let's move into the official part of the meeting. A lot of discussion about the comp plan and zoning this evening. Is there any comments from town council about the fourth ordinance we have up for consideration, which is our, our budget? If there's no further comments, I will close public hearing portion of the meeting. Going to open up some comments real quick. I understand Jane did have something she wanted to speak to. Appreciate your patience, Jane.
Jane Messia, 4/28 West Weble Row. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the Fourth of July event. It's on a Sunday. I also found out about social media that's going to sell in here on our community event. I'm highly opposed to that. Not only because of the date of July, I guess, but it's also a Sunday, all day, Sunday. Thank you.
Is it your recommendation that we discontinue that piece? I assume it's your recommendation we discontinue that. Oh, this microphone's not working very well. Sorry. It's your recommendation that we discontinue that portion of the, that aspect?
I, I like the recommendation that you do away with that trail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your comment is, well, it's. All right. Moving on, let's go to the approval of the June 7th meeting agenda. Does everyone have a copy of the agenda in front of them? And any additions or deletions to the agenda or considerations this evening? No, we have a motion to approve the agenda. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Opposed.
And it's approved. Moving on, the approval of the minutes from the May 3rd, 2021 meeting. Everyone have a copy of the minutes? We have any additions or deletions to those minutes? I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 3rd, 2021 meeting. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? I know we have the planning commission here this evening. I don't expect that we have any reports from them aside from the presentation of the comp plan. If I'm wrong about that, please let me know. And did we have a finance report in the packet? Okay.
Our May revenue was nineteen thousand, one hundred and five dollars and sixty-eight cents. And our May expenditures were eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighteen cents. And our May statement of balance as of 5/31, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and fourteen cents.
Thank you. I note we have on the action agenda coming up here, item A is the Van Wyk Sculpture and Landscape Event that we're doing. Appointing a special committee. I did not circulate an email with any more names. Do we have enough yet?
How many did we need?
I think five or seven or nine, being an odd number.
I believe we probably had five.
Tell you what, let's, when is that? That's.
It is July.
Let's table that. We've had a chance to talk to a few more folks. I've only got one commitment. All in favor of table on that to the next official meeting, say aye. Item B is misplaced on here. Please disregard item B. That's, looks like a typo. Oh, we already had the hearing on that as well. Okay. Moving on, we have the second reading of ordinance number 2021-01. It's an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter IV of the Van Wyk Code. Ordinances so as to authorize certain officials to issue and serve a uniform ordinance summons for any violations of the town's code of ordinances. Council approved first reading back at our May 3rd meeting. It's before us this evening. Second reading, is there a motion to consider ordinance number 2021-01? It's been moved and seconded on the question of consideration of ordinance number 2021-01. Is there any discussion? Now that we're ready for that question, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-01? Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Guys have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next up is the second reading of ordinance 2021-2. An ordinance to provide that the Lancaster County Uniform Development Ordinances as enacted on May 3rd, 2021 shall be adopted by the town of Van Wyk. And any amendment after this date must be separately adopted by the town. Council approved the first reading at the May 3rd, 2021 town council. Do I have a motion to consider ordinance number 2021-02? Question consideration of ordinance number 2021-02. Is the move seconded? Is there any discussions? All right, in that case, be ready for that question. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 2021-02? Second, all in favor of adopting, say aye. Guys have it, the ordinance is adopted. Item E, second reading of ordinance number 2021-03. It's an ordinance to impose a 12-month moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for district boundary amendments, conditional uses, major subdivision developments, and development agreements in the town of Van Wyk, and to provide for other matters related there too. Council approved the first reading at the May 3rd, 2021 town council meeting. So do I have a motion to consider ordinance number 2021-03? We have to consider, procedurally, you asked me on tape. The move and second on the question of consideration of ordinance number 2021-03. Is the move seconded? Is there any discussions? I know I'm going to have to rehash what I said earlier throughout the hearing. Okay, well. Sorry, bud. Yeah, that's, that's my proposal, is that we need to amend the current draft ordinance to pull out the conditional use piece. So current landowners in the town wanting to do a rezoning that requires a conditional use permit, which is effectively something that's already encompassed under the uses for that property, but requires a hearing. We're going to allow those to proceed if we make that amendment. That's, that's my proposal. And in that case, I move that we, we go ahead and table that ordinance and do the second reading at the next official hearing of July, I mean, the next official meeting of July. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Guys have it, and we move that one down to the next meeting. Just for everyone's benefit, I will point out that once that draft ordinance is available, it will be available on the website to review. So things aren't occurring in a vacuum and behind closed doors. That's how it ordinarily works. All right, moving on. Ordnance number 2021-04. It's an ordinance to adopt the town of Van Wyk 2021, 2022 fiscal year municipal budget. Council did approve the first reading at May 3rd, 2021 town council meeting. So motion to consider ordinance number 2021-04. I heard a second there. It's been moved and seconded. On the question of consideration of ordinance number 2021-04, is the move seconded? Is there any discussions? Now I'll take the floor briefly. I will point out to council that the budget exhibit was amended between the first reading and this hearing this evening to correct for the insurance tax revenues that we're going to be receiving. We expect to that will be revised downward over time. We don't know exactly what those numbers are going to be yet. So what I did was I adjusted that exhibit to show the amount that we received year to date. And I'll point out to town council that the amount we received year to date is still more than sufficient to fund the budget as. But to that end, just to work in class of state law, I also suggest that we table the second reading on this to the July meeting. That way, there's two readings in effect with the new exhibit attached. I'll have a chance to comment on it if there's concern. Anybody else on town council have any comments or concerns? Do I have a motion to table that question until the July meeting? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Guys have it? Next up, we have the first reading of ordinance number 2021-05. This is an ordinance to adopt stagger terms to the town council. So on the first reading, the motion to consider ordinance number 2021-05. Have a second. It's been moved and seconded. Council, please speak up. I have to get you on the record. Quick question of consideration of ordinance number 2021-05. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussions? All right, now that we're ready for the question, is there a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021-05? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Guys have it. First reading is approved. All right. Let's point up. First reading of ordinance number 2021-06. This is an ordinance to adopt the town of Van Wyk 2031 comprehensive plan. This is what we had the hearing on earlier. I would motion to consider ordinance number 2021-06. Seconded. Is there any discussions? Someone other than me? You should do, pull the microphone.
Are we not going to table the comprehensive plan until we talk to the large, we've got all the large landowners to get some of that in there?
Is that your proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
I agree with.
Anybody else? Four still. It does take two readings to pass an ordinance such as this, and ordinances such as this also require a hearing, which is what we have. So the, the question is that we want to table the first reading. Once, that's, that's. All right, do you have a motion to table until the July meeting, the first reading?
Karen, her hand.
Sorry, Karen. Okay.
So many of you know that the Lancaster County was developing a small area plan, and that was done in advance of the town's comprehensive plan. And I just wanted to make the point that although we, we didn't have individual divisions with large landowners, we did, that was the, I mean, through the small area plan, which there was a large portion of the town in that slant area. So many of the landowners participated in that process. Now, I'm not saying that that answers your question. I just wanted you to be aware that, that, that the outcomes of that project was.
We're still open. Make the discussion, town council.
But we heard tonight from the large landowners in the room is that we do need to maybe get with those guys and come up with something that's going to benefit everyone, so to just, you know, put their lives at risk. I, I do think we need to table it until we can meet with them.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to table the first reading to the July regular year?
I'll make that one.
That's second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of tabling the comprehensive plan? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. It's all in favor of tabling the comprehensive plan, first reading of the ordinance, the July regular meeting. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, all opposed? The eyes have it. We have tabled that reading to July. All right, um, first up on new business, let's set our work session for Monday, July 28th, 7:00 P M.
June.
I'm sorry, June. All in favor of, uh, setting up that work session for that day? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that'll be the date for that. Yeah, the new business from council this evening. All right, um, before I adjourn, I am going to ask that, um, those of you who want to have a meeting with town council and the planning commission to discuss things before our next reading. As proposed by certain folks, meet up with us after the meeting and we'll try to set up a date for that. That motion adjourned.
I'm like that motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.